Check, check. Check, you got it? All right, I'll let me try one at the dais. Check, check, check.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the public hearing for H R four nine two. This is a public hearing to consider and possibly adopt H R four nine two as an ordinance reapportioning the first, second, and third voting districts for two different township, a home rule municipality. Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have marked the following board exhibits for the hearing. Exhibit B one is the proof of publication of the notice from the Daily Local News on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Exhibit B two is the proof of publication of the notice that ran in the main line time suburban on October twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Exhibit B three is the copy of the email distribution list to those in the township who wish to receive public hearing notifications sent on November fourth, twenty twenty five. And exhibit B four is the copy of the ordinance under consideration by the board this evening. Those are the board exhibits for the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, sorry, thank you. Do we hear, uh, thanks, sorry about that. Do we hear any comments?
I can just, yeah, so, as you know, we, um, have been working on this. It's, it's part of the process. It will be going to Chester County and Pennsylvania Department of State for a final review. Um, this is the first step in that process. We have to do this ordinance and from there we'll hopefully have, it'll be ready to go. If not, there'll be additional comments and we'll have to bring it back. But I think we have a very good document and, um, we've followed the procedure as well and we'll see where it goes. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, and just for the public's, just as a reminder, we, we created a bipartisan committee to look at the change, any, look at what we needed to do to reapportion the voting districts and came up with the, um, you've probably heard, we had several meetings and discussed the guidelines and how, what we wanted to accomplish. And we ended up coming up with a relatively small change to make the populations between the three districts about even. So that was the process we went through. Um, do we have any public comments? All right. Yeah, sure, yeah.
My name is Margaret Van Arson. Um, I didn't read all the past history about this particular change in the voter redistricting. Uh, and what is the particular reason for doing it? I mean, you said briefly.
Sure, every year, every ten years, we do a census.
I'm sorry?
We do a census every ten years and the populations of the three districts are supposed to be relatively equal. And the, over time, development has happened in the township that's made those them unequal. So we needed to move some population from the western district to the middle district or from district three to district two.
I mean, is it, is it sheer numbers?
Yeah, it's just numbers.
I just, I didn't know how that affected the makeup of the populations that were being shifted and I'm, I'm not, I haven't done my homework on this particular issue.
I could, I could talk, I mean, basically what we looked at is you have, you know, there's three, there's a, there's a east, a middle, and a western voting district in the township, right? I represent the middle right now. But, you know, you have the east and Baskar is the, the west. And so those populations of those districts were set, these were, these districts were established, you know, I don't know, fifteen years ago, I don't know, a long time ago. And over time, populate, you know, the, there's been development in the township. So what happened was the populations between the three districts weren't equal enough anymore. They had drifted because we had added population to the western district. So we just moved one of the voting precincts from the west to the middle and that makes it, you know, much more, much more equal, much more reasonable.
And it's based on sheer number, sheer number or not, in terms of the nature of the populations that are being shifted?
This is, no, no, this isn't like some gerrymander thing. This is just the popu, it's just pure numbers. It, it's all just getting the right number of people in each district.
Okay, I just, oh, thank you.
We looked at, our committee looked at a few different factors. First, we vote, we decided on the factors we cared about and it was population and also having a pretty smooth, um, I'm trying to remember all the things, but like having a smooth lines.
Contiguous, compact.
Compact, yeah, that's what it was.
And equal.
And then having the number shake out. And we had a very cool tool that Doug Anisad put together so that we could do it all through very cool data analysis, which is available on our website if you want to kind of look at it and, and see exactly.
And the other thing we did, just to be clear, is we made a decision early on that we were not going to change the voting precincts. So where people vote was not going to change. So that was the other thing. So we had, we had to move precincts around. We weren't like cutting precincts up in weird ways. So that's the other thing that, that was drove, drove the decision we made.
I know sometimes when, uh, populations change, when things change like that, the people who voted in one place will suddenly find the next time they have to vote someplace else and then they get, they get lost and they end up not voting.
That's one of the things we didn't do. So they, you, you vote where you're voting. You're not, nothing's changing. And you're not moving, by the way. You're staying where you are.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
But one, one comment I wanted to be adding to that was that, uh, we don't really control the precincts. That's done by Chester County Voter Services. So what we get to do is decide which precincts go into which district. And we went through, you know, there were, I forget what it was, a hundred or over a hundred different permutations and combinations according to the maps that, uh, that Doug, according to the tool that Doug Anisad put together. And as a result of that, this was, with the, by moving one precinct from the western district to the central district, we're able to keep the populations of the districts roughly comparable, keep the districts compact and, you know, have the boundaries be reasonably smooth. So it meets a lot of those criteria. So I think that, and again, both parties were ex, in, involved in the, in the process. So I think that this is a, a good solution.
Any other public comment or questions? I have a roll call vote. Supervisor Holt.
Aye.
Supervisor Gussi.
Aye.
Supervisor, uh, Westaki.
Aye.
Supervisor Baskar.
Aye.
Supervisor Johnston-Pew. And I vote aye, motion carries. I'm going to adjourn the public hearing for H R four nine two and call to order the public hearing for the twenty twenty six preliminary budget. This is a public hearing to consider and possibly adopt, uh, twenty twenty six preliminary budget. Mr. McKenna and then Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've marked the following board exhibits for this hearing. Exhibit B one is the proof of publication of the notice of the preliminary budget that ran in the Daily Local News on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Exhibit B two is the proof of publication of the notice that ran in the main line time suburban on November second, twenty twenty five. Exhibit B three is a copy of the email distribution list. Exhibit B three is a copy of the email distribution list to those who wish to receive it for public hearing notifications that was sent on November fourth, twenty twenty five. And exhibit B four is a copy of the twenty twenty six preliminary budget to be considered by the board this evening. Those are the exhibits for this hearing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McKenna. Mr. Duraco.
Uh, I, just as, as, uh, we've gone over in the past, this is a required step, uh, as, you know, per our charter. And so, uh, nothing's changed in terms of what, um, we've posted to, to the website and, and what we, uh, presented at, at the last board meeting. And so, um, we're, we're happy to answer any questions the board might have, but, uh, we do have on the agenda later tonight to talk about some of the changes that we anticipate and will make for the final budget.
And we can also later on today talk about a revised capital budget with the, the capital.
Yeah, that'll be a part of it.
Okay, good. Good. Thank you. All right, any, any comments? Oh, I saw your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any comment from the board?
Yes, it's, it's a little difficult because I know we're going to have a budget discussion later, but I want to explain like my thoughts before our vote on the preliminary budget. Um, so I, along with the finance committee and everybody else, have reviewed the budget thoroughly, spoken with department heads, staff, fellow supervisors, residents. And I, I believe that the budget provides a solid level of services, not outstanding or top level services, but solid services for our residents for the upcoming year. Our residents ask a lot of our staff and we are, we're stretched, in my opinion. We're working on that, but I think that'll remain the case for twenty twenty six. Nonetheless, township staff and our first responders go above and beyond what is asked of them. And I and the board and everyone is deeply appreciative of that fact. Our continued reliance on real estate taxes, transfer taxes, permits, um, bricks and sticks, I believe, um, to fund all of our operations in stormwater, fire, capital expenditure, et cetera, I continue to believe is a mistake. It places too much of a burden on our residents, especially those on fixed income and paid real estate taxes. I've argued and continue to argue for additional source of revenue such as an E I T, but the board at this time has not shown a willingness to do so. I'm not going to relitigate it now. That's for future boards. It just brings me to some of the fire departments that serve our township. It's important for us to address. Um, it's been an up and down year. We've opened a wonderful new firehouse. We've invested in our substation. Um, I, I think we, we all believe that we receive the finest services we, we do from the fire departments. But there seems to be a bit of a disconnect between the boards of East Town and Trudifferent and the fire companies between what they're seeking from us and what we're willing to deliver to them. Part of this is a failure to get the Trudifferent East Town Fire Authority off the ground this year. We thought that was going to happen. It didn't happen. We hired a fire director that we thought would help navigate a lot of these issues. He resigned. It was unfortunate, but these things happen. Currently, Radnor Fire Company seeks two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of additional funding than what was proposed in the preliminary budget. They cite historic underfunding according to Township Services formulas. Paoli Fire seeks somewhere between a hundred and seventy and two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for extra F, two extra F T Es, a voluntary incentive program, and staff retention program. They also note a six to eight million dollar capital need. Berwin seeks two hundred thousand dollars for a deposit for a ladder truck, one that was frankly approved a year ago and was redirected. Um, hundred fifty thousand dollars approximately for new fire uniforms and equipment, um, updates to EMS ambulance and additional increases to operations that all these requests are not in the current preliminary budget. Our staff, subcommittee supervisors from East Town, Trudifferent, all need to work collaboratively in the next couple of weeks to figure this out. That is my understanding of what will happen, that there's going to be further discussions in the next couple of weeks to discuss these requests and what the township can provide. Right now, I do not see myself voting for the approval of a final budget without substantial increases in funding and responses to the fire company's requests. We don't have a fire director now and many of these requests, in my opinion, appear reasonable. I look forward to an updated budget once the interested parties have had a chance to regroup and talk and discuss through these issues. I can understand completely the difficulty in corralling three fire departments, two townships, staff, twelve supervisors in, in, in this project. And I, I, that's why I really defer, I'm not on the fires subcommittee. I, I do the best I can to talk to representatives from everyone around. This is not an easy task. We've had requests come in. I know these discussions will continue, but I just wanted to let the public know my views on what's going on right now and why I'm voting yes for the preliminary budget while I'm still, uh, hold out to see the changes for the final. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Public comments?
I do have a comment. I am in the same mindset as Matt when it comes to fire. I've read some things and I've talked to some folks and I was not part of that, um, board, so I can't say what was said in the meetings because I wasn't there. I can only go by what was said and I'm going to go with the basic that I was always told. There's your side, there's their side, and the truth lies in the middle. And so I along also with Matt, I will give approval for the preliminary, but I believe that we need to do a deep dive and for certain things that the, all three companies are asking for. I understand it, it's, some people may call it a wish list. Well, in my real nine to five job, I have a wish list too. There's certain things I want right now at my job and there's certain things that I know I can't have, so I prioritize them. And when I do that, I get what I really need in the beginning and then we work it on the back end. So I also will give an approval for the preliminary, but I want to work and do a deep dive to see if we can get some of the things. Bar none that, yes, we put a new firehouse together because the old one was falling apart, but that also got put together with everybody's taxpaying dollars. So I along with Matt, I'll give you okay for the preliminary, but I need to see something change for the final. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Public comments? All right. Uh, we have a roll call vote. And so, um, Supervisor Holt.
Aye.
Supervisor Gussi.
Aye.
Supervisor, uh, Waisaki.
Aye.
Supervisor Baskar.
Aye.
Supervisor Carl, uh, Johnston Pew. And I vote aye. The preliminary budget, uh, passes. Thank you. I'm going to adjourn the public hearing. Call to order the public meeting. We'll start with announcements. In observance of Veterans Day, township offices will be closed Tuesday, November eleventh. The twenty twenty six budget open house will be held Thursday, November thirteenth from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. at the Township Building. Now we have approval of the minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October twentieth public meeting.
So moved.
Your second. Any comments to the minutes from the board? Any public comments to the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The board met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss legal matters. Uh, now we have a supervisor liaison report from Supervisor Baskar.
Thank you, Chairman. So normally these liaison reports would be in the, the meeting in the third week of the month, but I will not be here in person and be unable to attend virtually as well, so I'm doing my report today. And, um, so the library board of trustees met on Thursday, October twenty third. So for starters, um, November eighth is the annual mini golf fundraiser for the library. So please come out on Saturday between ten and four and you can play eighteen holes of mini golf in the Stratford Library and four holes of mini golf in the.
Recording in progress.
So the, the library is actively recruiting for staff as a consequence of retirements and resignations. And then the Chester County Library System, as some of you may know, there was a, an issue with the network for the libraries with the phone system and the, the internet. So the Chester County Library System is still sorting through the fallout from the network issues. Um, the policy committee has received the photography policy back from the solicitor and the board approved that. So the next set of policies that are being reviewed are the behavior and beverage policies. The treasurer noted that the electricity bill is going up rapidly and this is a significant budgetary concern. I'm sure it's going up for, for everyone and I've heard it's because of all the A I data centers that are being constructed and consume electricity. But again, I don't know what the co, I can't say for sure what the cause is, but the rates are going up. And then the, the friends, the, the twenty twenty six holiday scheduling was approved. The Friends of Trudifferent Public Library, which basically funds the library through donations of books which are then sold. So they really need more volunteers and in particular, they really need someone who can step into the role of treasurer. So if you're interested, you know, please do, please do consider volunteering. The next meeting, which is the last of the year, will take place on Thursday, November twentieth in the Stratford Library. And Supervisor Holt has kindly agreed to fill in for me as the liaison for that meeting. Moving on to the Environmental Advisory Council, I would like to first make a motion to appoint Phil Whitmer to complete the term switcher's term on the Environmental Advisory Council. That is a motion?
So moved.
Okay. So, um, you know, just by way of explanation, um, normally when we have vacancies, we hold them open for thirty days, but in the E A C, we have associate members and the associate members actively participate in the E A C's activities. So when there is a vacancy, typically one of the associates would move up to the, to the role of member. So Phil Whitmer has been very active for quite some time. And so he's, uh, now the, going to step up and fill the, the term of, of term switch.
Any other board comments? Any public comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And then, moving on to my liaison report, the E A C met on Tuesday, October twenty eighth. And, uh, about forty-five to fifty of the ninety-one new trees to be planted at Wilson Farm Park have been planted. A Krabby Creek salt snapshot was completed successfully and with the assistance of a Girl Scout troop, so they got good data. The girls had a lot of fun and, uh, you know, they learned a lot about monitoring and about science while, while doing it. Uh, thanks to a grant from the, from Aqua Essentials, uh, the E A C gets to decorate a hole at the mini golf course. Um, so if you play golf, mini golf in the library, you'll see the E A C decorated hole. And there's enough left over from that to, uh, and there's discussion about what could be done with that, possibly doing a naturalization of a small basin with a small educational program to go with it. They also talked about the E A C table at Community Day and apparently that was quite successful with a lot of people stopping by. Now, if, if, for those who came in from the front, you'd have noticed that the plastic bag and film recycling bins are back at the, the front of the building. So please do encourage people to put clean plastic films and, and bags there for recycling. And there was also discussion about resident interest in restrictions on gas powered blowers. And if you may remember at the last meeting, we had residents come up and speak about it to us. And Lower Merion has apparently passed a, um, an ordinance on restricting, um, gas powered leaf blowers. So it's something that we can study and, and learn from and see what, what we would like to do. And now that we have a year's experience with the woodland conservation ordinance, there was discussion at the E A C about how we could possibly improve the ordinance because we have years worth of experience with it. The next meeting of the E A C will be on Tuesday, December second, in the community room. And that ends my report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Baskar. Supervisor Johnston Pew, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Robin Forbes Drucker, Brad Murphy, and Eric Hadas to the zoning hearing board.
Wait here a second. Any, any, uh, comments from the board? Any public comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we're going to have the twenty twenty six budget discussion. Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. So, uh, last week, our department heads, uh, came into our finance committee meeting to meet with the finance committee, um, and discuss both our, you know, operating budgets and our capital budgets. As part of that conversation, we started talking about, uh, you know, some of the, the, the changes that we need to make, um, to both, both aspects of the budget. And, and we really focused on capital, given that, you know, one of the slides that I had in, uh, my presentation showed that, you know, where our reserves would be and our fund balance would be if we continued along, uh, the path that we're going. So, uh, I'm going to go over some of the, the recommended changes from the finance committee that, that, you know, for the final budget and, uh, you know, kind of how much, uh, what the impact is, is going to be, uh, you know, for, for the next, you know, for, for a couple of weeks from now. So for the general fund, if, for operating, one of the things that we are going to do, uh, it'll, you know, it'll be a one, one year thing, but we're going to budget, uh, probably about twenty thousand dollars for America two fifty to do something, um, you know, along with the Historical Commission, something like that. One of the, the big changes, uh, that is coming to the general fund is that we're going to, right now, for short-term disability, we're self-insured. And this year alone, uh, you know, just due to various things, we've spent, uh, you know, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, that, that we've paid in, in salaries for short-term disability. With, you know, switching to an insurance policy, insurance will cover sixty percent of that. So, you know, that, that, that'll lessen the burden quite a bit for us. Um, and so, uh, that change will be coming into the final budget as well. For fire and EMS, uh, we're looking right now recommending, uh, based on our, the, the meetings and conversations, an additional contribution to Paoli for their volunteer, uh, stipend program. Our share of that would be seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. We also, in, in working with, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, who's been in close contact with Mr. Baskin, the ambulance that we purchased earlier this year needs a, a little bit more equipment. Um, so we're budgeting about fourteen thousand dollars of, for our share of that. For the sewer fund, um, we're looking to add a sewer line inspection program. The current one that we have doesn't integrate with our G I S system and our work order system. And so Darren worked with, uh, our I T director, Mike J, to, to find a program that will actually integrate into both our G I S and work order system. So, uh, we'll be making that change. For the library, somewhat of a bigger change, uh, the township's going to be taking over the bookkeeping, uh, for the library. Uh, right now, they, they go through the county and they've had, you know, they've, you know, continued to experience some issues with, with doing that. Not only does the county charge them to cut checks and mail them, they also, it's a slow process and so they're constantly getting late notices, things like that. So, um, I met with, uh, the auditors to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page. The, the, uh, library will be shown as a component unit, so it's technically, uh, like a separate entity, but it'll, it'll flow through into our, um, financials at the end of the day, but we're, I'll be in, in, you know, integrating that into the final budget and, and working that through. The big one obviously is capital. And so I'll start off at that, you know, the, the finance committee really asked us to take a hard look at, at what the next five years looks like. And, uh, make some hard decisions on, you know, purchases, on projects, um, knowing that, you know, is, that we want to get everything done, but, um, we don't necessarily have the, the, the funds to do that. And so, um, you know, we, we, as a group, sat down and, and really started, you know, looking through everything with a fine tooth comb. So, uh, based on that meeting and, and again, the discussions with the finance committee, what we are, uh, going to change and, and recommend is, we had some, we had paving for the entire township complex. Uh, we're going to reduce that just to the public works yard where, where it really needs it. Um, so that'll save us probably, that'll, you know, we're anticipating that's going to save us a couple hundred thousand. We did, we were asked to consolidate the Chase Road improvements from being, you know, spread out over the next five years to consolidate that up. We are removing, we had, uh, in the preliminary. preliminary budget, two electric vehicles for the police department and a solar panel feasibility study. So we're gonna remove those at this point, given that we, we know that we can support the charging stations for two additional electric vehicles, but anything beyond that is going to require a substantial investment into new infrastructure, mainly a new transformer, if PICO will even drop one. And so before we take those next steps, we wanted to have a deeper discussion. We wanted to try to seek some grant funding for some of these bigger things and, and initiatives that we have. And so we, we, you know, made the tough decision to remove those. And then we also removed the budget for the website. And then we also are moving out, we have in there money for a grant, for the Greenlight Grow, Greenlight Go program, to replace all the adaptive signals in Paoli. That actually just needed to move into the utility fund where those things are paid out of. And then Dupre Thai House reached out with the support of the Historical Commission, and it's on the agenda tonight to approve, applying for an LSA grant for $80,000 for a, for something at the Dupre Thai House for, for America 250. So that'll be placed in there. And so I know that's a lot, but we'll, we'll, you know, those were, were kinda the, the big changes that we have up until this point. And knowing that, you know, we're gonna have a discussion and then look to make some changes to the, to the final budget. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Duraco. Board comments or observations or things you wanna talk about?
I do got a question. You, if, if I heard you right, Duraco, you said you're taking the website out, or?
Yeah. So, and I failed to mention, so making all these changes decreased the use of general fund reserves of the next five years by 1.3 million. So, yeah, we, we took it out for now, or will for the final budget.
I, I will make a comment that the current website hosting is run by a company that I refer to as Repoff Hosting, Inc. But, you know, obviously, it costs money to move to a site that is more cost-effective, so that's the balance. So I'm not happy with that, but I will obviously mention it. But right now, you wanna make the books balance, so I realize this is temporary. But the thought that we're continuing to, to have a website hosted by Repoff Hosting is something that I'm not happy about.
Yeah. Oh, I, we understand that very clearly. It, it just was the cost to move it versus, yeah, you get the math. It's just, yeah. It's unfortunate we ended up here, and it is definitely not something we're gonna continue with. I mean, I, I agree with you. Yeah. Any other comments on the board?
Just briefly, I'm very, I'm excited that we continue to fund activities of our various commissions in the township, and our volunteers put so much time into these commissions. And I think it's incredibly worthwhile expenditure of funds, 'cause they, they put on some great activities for, for the public. So I was glad to see that there. We've talked about it briefly before. 2026 is gonna be a big year, decision-making for the future of our libraries. Not really too much going on, except for some minor necessary upgrades to Tridifern Library for 2026. But there's gonna be a number of public events where we'll be soliciting input to where we want our libraries to go in the future, and how much we want to invest in them and, and how to do it. So I just want folks to realize that that's gonna be on the agenda for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Holt. Any other board comments? Are we gonna present the, that chart, an updated chart on capital?
Um-
Maybe, I mean, it does not have to be tonight, but we should, I think the public deserves to see a revised version.
Yeah. We can do that with the final budget.
How about the budget workshop? That's before the final-
Yeah, I can have that.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's put it the final, at the budget workshop, and let's make it on the website so people can see it. Because I think there was a lot of comments on that chart last time, and-
Yep.
I think we want, we're gonna make sure we under, people understand, like, this group, this is the first time this group, as, as a group, has talked about the budget together, because of Sunshine Laws, right? We can't, you know, meet except in public. So that's sort of what happened with that chart, was to really get the point across as to how much we were spending, which I think worked. And we should just provide, you know, show the revised chart to the public. So thanks. Any public comments?
Ray Clark from Malvern. First to echo Supervisor Holt's point about budgets for our commissions. We did say last time that there is money in there for the Arts Commission. I didn't see a line item. It might be good to have a line item.
Yeah, I think, so up until this budget, it's, it was by itself. We grew, we now have like a bigger budget for all of the-
Which, all the, all the various volunteer organizations-
But I'll double check on that. Good.
Good. Certainly, it's a good thing to take a, kind of a fine look at where we're spending money. But also, I don't think we should necessarily feel completely capital-constrained. I mean, there are bond markets over the next five years. One would think that we could package enough projects together to go raise money and, and use that. So to the extent that there are good things that can be done, I wouldn't necessarily throw those babies out with the bathwater. So-
I, I can assure you, there's lots of projects still happening.
Yeah. I learned more about the fire situation from Supervisor Holt's comments in that five minutes than we'd heard in the last six months. So thank you for kind of raising that. I think it would be really helpful for the community, and, and for you guys, as you kind of sort this out over the next few months, to have a kind of a clear exposition of like the last three years of history of, you know, service levels, call rates, that kinds of, on the demand side, on the spending side, a history of people, by types of people, full-time, part-time, fire, EMS, et cetera. Both the numbers and dollars, and full-time, part-time volunteers, so we can, the public can get their heads around what is really going on. And then, of course, on the revenue side, last three years, how much insure, what's the trends in insurance reimbursements, what's the trends in township contributions, resident contributions, either, you know, from the volunteer solicitations and the taxes, and try to kind of have a picture for us as to why we're spending, why we're proposing to spend the money we're proposing to spend, wherever that eventually ends up, which it seems is not now. So I would just encourage you to, like, have that historical context as a support for whatever your forecast budget is, that would help us understand it. So that was it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other public comments? I think that concludes the budget. Anything else you guys wanna talk about? Yeah, maybe? Anything else? No? That'd be good. Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. We need a motion to ratify an emergency sanitary sewer project on Old State Road. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. During our CIPP project, we identified a section of pipe that we couldn't get, reline because of an offset joint. We tried to repair it with a point repair. We weren't able to do that. It actually did some more damage to the pipe, which made us have to go in there and do an emergency repair to replace the 10-foot section of sanitary sewer pipe. We contacted Ronald Smith of Downingtown. The repair costs are $23,949.50. The only part that's still, will have to be done in the spring. They'll have to come back in and do a permanent repair on the roadway. So-
Mr. Fitzgerald, yeah, thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Your motion?
So moved.
Wait here a second.
Second.
Any public, any board comments or questions?
I do got one. Darren, so the company that came in, they charged the amount that you said to get it fixed, but then in the spring, they have to come back and do something else?
They'll just have to do the final restoration to the roadway. They're just temporary, but blacktop in there now to get us through, through the winter, 'cause it's getting too, too cold to do the, the top coat.
But they won't, that, the amount that you just said that we got paid out, that is the amount. They won't charge anything?
They will be charging us more for the-
They'll charge more for the, so how much more are they gonna, what, what would be the total amount with what they did, plus what they're gonna ask for the blacktop, like?
I'm gonna take a guess, probably about another $7,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Need a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-18, authorizing submission of an application to the Pennsylvania DCED Local Share Account Program for the Tridifern Heritage Center at Dupre Tail House project, the amount of $80,000. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board and public. As mentioned earlier, we are looking to submit on behalf of the Dupre Thai House to the Local Share Account Program, an amount of $80,000 for kiosk and other improvements in, in the, the Dupre Thai House location as part of the America 250, and to be a, a waypoint in terms of connecting Valley Forge and, and us, and our location to the Paoli Battlefield. So there, Rob is, Rob Williams here is from the Historic Commission. He can answer any specifics about the application itself, but we, we would have to submit on their behalf. So that's why we have a resolution before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Wait here a second.
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Yeah, public, Rob, do you mind giving us a, yeah, just give us a quick overview?
No.
If you don't mind, just come up and give, give, just for the public, so if people hear what this is about. I think it's an interesting project.
Sure. Hi, I'm Rob Williams. I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission. The grant proposed is part of a, a larger investment at Dupre Thai House, which is part of a larger scheme for Chester County to create heritage centers throughout the county. And we've been working for three years now to get Dupre Thai House, the greater complex. So it's Dupre Thai House, Federal Barn, and Jones Log Barn as a campus. Within the construct of the county, initially, there'll be 12 heritage centers. Others would be at Paoli Battlefield, Historic Yellow Springs, Goshen Blacksmith Shop, all the way down through the Brandy Wayne Battlefield. The Dupre Thai group has really come together for the last two years to create a nonprofit that will be changing their current sole practice as a, a wedding and event venue into more of a heritage center. It will be part of a network that Chester County is promoting. The county already has a grant of $330,000 to buy the kiosks. There's a solicitation into the county government, this for 2026, of 150,000 to network all these kiosks together. And then our local group has identified the work needed to be done. This specific grant for $80,000 would cover much of the brick and mortar, much of the data and electricity that would be needed to expand the interpretive center, which mostly will be placed in the Federal Barn, and then some of the interpretive work. So it's a piece of a larger investment, and this will become our node, some, as Mr. Martin said, between Valley Forge Park and the rest of Chester County. Tridifern is ideally located to bring all these people from 2026 and 2027 to be part of our tourism, part of our restaurants. Some of them will actually stay in our hotels and expand Tridifern's view. Lastly, say that last week, we had a meeting with all the heritage groups in Tridifern East Town with the Tridifern East Town School District. There were 25 people in attendance, and we're talking about expanding the offerings from K through 12. And the heritage center would be smack in the middle of where all that educational, in-the-field would happen. So it's an exciting opportunity. We look forward to the support of the township.
Thank you. A quick question, though. How much is the town, township's financial commitment here?
Ask again.
The, what is the finan, the financial commitment from the township? We were applying for a grant for $80,000, but how-
So the, the grant is from the LSA, which the Local Share. You likely know that that's the state gambling money, as I understand it. With my friend Angela Scully here, who's been helping us in that regard, it's a pure grant of 100% with no cost match.
Is that right? Wow, okay.
That is correct.
All right, cool.
We only find the best grants.
That is a good one, yeah. I like it. I like it. Gambling money that we don't have to match isn't, it's a, yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other comments or questions? Yeah, sure. There's somebody behind you. Thanks.
Hi, Hans Ramall Paoli. I just had a question. Is there a project timeline that this grant is basically trying to be bumped up against? Because with the state budget impasse, they're not paying out grants right now, and would hate to see that problem.
I'll let Rob talk about that timeline, but I can address, so yeah, we're kind of in a pickle right now, because we have our own grant in for Friendship Park. And I actually was just reaching out to Senator Comer's office, which, you know, we may have to resubmit this, this round again and figure it out later, kind of thing. But yeah, so in terms of timeline of the project, Rob can talk about that. But as you know, these aren't usually announced until October. So I think they are aware of that, and I'm not sure how that would impact your timeline.
To answer the question of schedule, so there is a master schedule that Dupre Thai is working against for 2026 and a full implementation in 2027. Separately, there's, you know, we'll be doing fundraising, but the understanding is, the grants come slowly on the LSA side. So we do have contingency in the plan. It'd be nice to get this grant, 'cause it would defray monies that could go for other parts of the educational program and the site development. But anyway, we're taking a shot.
Yeah, it seems like a risk-free option to take a shot and see if we get it. I mean, eventually, the state was gonna have to have a budget. Well, yeah. We make an application, we see what happens. I don't think there's any risk to it, that's for sure. Any other comments in the public? This is a roll call vote. Supervisor, um, Holt?
Aye.
Supervisor, Gussi?
Aye.
Supervisor, Isaki?
Aye.
Supervisor, Baskar?
Aye.
Supervisor, Johnston-Pugh?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Now, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-19, authorizing staff to submit an LSA grant application for the repairs and rehabilitation of the Glen Hardy Road Bridge south over Trout Creek and the West Valley Road Bridge over the Norfolk Southern Lines. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller and members of the board, as we just went over the LSA grant application, we are asking the board's permission to submit this LSA grant application. We're working with Bowman. We've identified these two bridges as in need of repairs. They're not replacement candidates, they're just repairs to stone masonry, some concrete, guide rail for the West Valley Road as well. So these fall under the infrastructure requirements under this LSA grant, so that's a good candidate. They are things that improve the quality of life in the community, so they're directly, you know, in line. We are asking up to $800,000 for both projects. We're gonna refine that. We're doing the engineering budget analysis right now. We had some cost estimates we did with a, our previous contractor, just to get a, like, a good ballpark estimate earlier this year, and we're gonna do more defined things before we submit the grant. But we think this is a, you know, good potential candidate for this LSA grant, good use of money for these two repair projects.
Thank you, Mr. Burgo. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions?
Hans Ramall, one more time. I support the effort of the township to do this. I would just encourage the township to also be looking at, see what pieces of this project may also qualify for whatever grants the Commonwealth may offer, because the LSA and the RACP grants are the two most competitive Commonwealth grants. And so obviously, we wanna make sure that this project gets funded. And so I support it, but just hope that that's being considered. Thank you.
Any other public comments? This is a roll call vote. Supervisor Holt?
Aye.
Supervisor, Gussi?
Aye.
Supervisor, Isaki?
Aye.
Supervisor, Baskar?
Aye.
Supervisor, Johnston-Pugh?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Now, we have a discussion of the Parks Foundation's status. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and public. Just real, real briefly, I just wanna give the board and the public an update. Staff met with Ally Hunter and Bill Richter from the Parks Foundation. Staff met with Ally Hunter and Bill Richter from the Parks Foundation. As you know, they've been, they were founded, I think, around 2008, 2009-ish, not exactly, don't have the exact date, but anyway, they've been a fundraising arm, 501(c)(3) to help support projects in the parks in different ways, you know, and supporting, you know, the hot apple cider and things at our events, they have a table, so they've been working pretty hard to be out there, visible. The challenge is, it's called the Tridifern Township Park Foundation, so people often think, well, I'm already paying for things through our taxes, that, you know, we don't need to support the foundation. So they really haven't raised a lot of money. They have one more payment as part of the Wilson Farm Park upgrade, and after that, they will have about $40,000 left in their account. So Ally and Bill met with staff to kind of talk about what their status should be going forward. So it's really a discussion for the board. I want to get it to your attention. They're happy to, I guess, fold at this point. They're not raising a lot of money because there aren't projects that they feel they can go out and fundraise for, they're not really fundraisers anymore. They like to do events. Ally is a great addition, and we'd love to see her in other capacity, help us in the township as well. So they're really asking for guys. They're happy to stay around and still manage the money, but they'll be down to about 40,000, as I said, and, you know, the only funds they're receiving now is through the events that we hold as a township. If we have alcohol sales at some of the special events, they receive those, some of the proceeds that go into their account. So it's really a thought process for the board. Do we want them to continue? And we can have further discussions, but they ask that we start thinking about what we want to see them do in the future. So happy to answer other questions about that.
Thanks.
So if they were to fold, where would donations go if someone wanted to donate to the park?
So that, that's the question. So they would, the check, they would write us a check, they would know the 501(c)(3) would cease to operate. We could receive donations, but we don't, you know, we don't generally solicit donations. We have sponsors for events, you know, you see a lot of...
Well, let's have the alcohol sales. We could, we...
Yeah, that would go into us for park, park events and things like that.
Are those donations tax deductible for the donor?
It's easier through a 501(c)(3). If you're making a donation specifically for a fundraising event, it's easier. I mean, you'd have, we'd have to do specific letters. We don't, have not really taken a lot of specific contributions directly as a township.
Yeah, okay. So from a donor perspective, it's easier if the 501(c)(3) continues to exist, and how much, is there a cost associated with maintaining it, or is it difficulty?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's, they don't have a lot of money. There's a certain level where they require audits, they're not, they don't have that kind of funds at this point, so, yeah, if, you know, they were set to fundraise for the bike park and be the vehicle to collect that. They're kind of like, if you give us, you know, they would stick around and be motivated for, if there were certain projects, they could really help participate, but again, they were usually like for the goalposts, and then people would raise the money, make the donations because they would get the tax incentive, and then they would cut the check for the project. So that's, I mean, they're not really fundraising directly for large projects, they're kind of a vehicle, but that's the thing, they're happy to stick around, it's just they feel like they have a table at these events, people don't know what they do, and there's, you know, without some sort of initiative, they feel kind of lost, and that's kind of why I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah. Have they talked to the park board about projects that they could fundraise for?
I don't know if they specifically have done that. It was kind of the first discussion, and they want, you know, like I said, because they're really, they're worried because they're getting down to the end of their money, is really what, you know, and what they want to do at this point. But I can still, we can certainly have that discussion with the parks board and have them sit down there. They're definitely motivated, like Ally Hunter's great, Bill Richter's good, you know, but they're just, they're not sure, they're not really fundraisers, but they're a vehicle that could be used for people to make donations if there is a project we want to push through them, that, like, that's why they're helping Wilson Farm Park, right? So, and they, you know, they donate what we collect and use that towards small things at our events that they can, they can fund for.
Yeah.
Provide funds for.
All right, any other?
Well, if it's a 501(c)(3), they're gonna require someone to do reporting and have, you know, people with certain roles. Now, you said they were happy to continue, but I'm kind of wondering, you know, how motivated they're gonna be to continue, and if you have a 501(c)(3) where the members are really not motivated to continue, then perhaps it's not such a great thing to continue, then they should close shop.
Yeah, I use that term motivated, I think to your point, Baskar, it's, they're, they're not motivated right now, they're not sure what they should do. They used to get funds directly, we used to have the naming rights for the fields, but that's kind of gone away. Corporate sponsors now prefer to have their name on an event where more people are coming and more eyeballs see it at a special event, like Pico sponsors our Christmas Light event, and, you know, we have wonderful sponsors for all our concert series, so that revenue's gone away, and that's why they're kind of like, well, you know, we're not sure where they fit in, so that's kind of, we're trying to help figure that out. They're happy, if we say like, you know, we don't have a purpose for them right now, they would just, you know, close up and give us, make the final contribution to us, and then we would handle it going forward.
Is there anybody here from the Park Foundation? Yeah, would, you want to just explain what you guys are thinking?
Arthur Sidrauzi, Painter's Lane, Treasurer for the Park Foundation Board, served in that capacity only a couple of years, and really came on after we pitched the bike park to validate what Bill was saying. Having done a lot of fundraising, just, you know, people dropping a couple bucks in the box really doesn't raise a lot, and it's been more of a vehicle. The environmental council has come to us a couple times for some projects in the parks, and we've been the vehicle for that, you know, to get the funds in and get the funds paid out. It's more like 65,000 sitting in the account right now. I sent out an update today, but it's just been, I would like to see the opportunity for at least us to meet with Parks and Rec and just make sure that they know we're there. The 20,000 we're talking about spending for, you know, the 250th anniversary, maybe that could come from the Parks Foundation instead of taxpayer funds, too. So maybe we should find some better way to communicate and make sure that people are aware we're there. It is a good vehicle. The Boca form is 15 bucks a year to keep the 501(c)(3), so it really isn't a lot. Yeah.
No, thanks. Can I, can we ask you to go to the Park and Rec Board meetings? I mean, Diane's here, yeah, you want to, maybe, yeah, you guys should talk, probably. Can you guys do that and then come back? I hate to say that, but, because it is a, I mean, it's funny to just fold up a foundation and say we don't want to try to raise money for the parks anymore.
It's got 65, not 40.
Yeah, it's got 65,000, and we did, you know, we're writing grants, we're writing grants that, as Hans pointed out...
Well, yeah, that's gonna come, there's one more, the payment for Wilson Farm, that's why it's gonna come down. I think there's a 25,000 payment, that's, yeah.
But anyway, but anyway, that's...
Checks in the box.
All right, but anyway, I just, I would hate to, let's see what else we want to talk about with respect to, because I think this isn't, this isn't one I just make easily, given that it does feel weird not to be trying to raise money for our parks. Any other, yeah, go ahead.
I do have one other comment, which is that we do have a model with the library, where there's a library foundation, which is an independent 501(c)(3), but they raise funds for the library, but they actively raise funds. In fact, they're actually, you know, the mini golf tournament that I talked about earlier is actually a library foundation event held at the library, but, you know, we work together. So, you know, I wonder if there's, you know, yes, there is the model where the library, where the Parks Foundation kind of closes shop. There's a model where it kind of chugs along, and perhaps there's a model where it can more actively work and do something, so it's something that, you know, I'd certainly encourage you to talk about and with the, with the other members of the foundation and with the parks board. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think I sort of feel like, to the comment that Supervisor Baskar made earlier, like, we can't make you guys keep doing this if you don't want to, right? But if there's, if you're really just seeking a role or a way to do this, I think talking to the park board itself and talking to the library foundation and seeing how other people operate at least might give you some ideas.
Well, I mean, it's clear, my role as treasurer is fairly minimal. I take the money in, deposit the checks, write checks. The fundraising part, you know, can be a challenging part, and it could be time-consuming, and I think it's just, it's been a little overwhelming and not sure really what, where the focus should be. So perhaps partnering with the library board and talking more with Parks and Rec, we can get some ideas and then generate some motivation for doing some broader fundraising.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Art. Any other public discussion on this topic? Go ahead.
So the Historical Commission would love to talk to the Park Foundation. Two of the projects we envisioned for 2026 into 2027 actually directly tied to the parks. One is, we do have a commitment for a reenactment of British Forces in Teagarden Park in September 19 and 20. We'll have a small contingent in '26 and a very large contingent in '27. That's Teagarden, and that's an educational and public awareness activity. The other is to place interpretive signs for the history of our parks. This is a project that I know Supervisor Hummel is interested in. She's always asked about what is the history of Park 1, Park 2, Park 3, and as far as I know, only one of our parks actually has an interpretive sign of the history, and that oddly is the Bird Sanctuary. So some of our larger parks, which actually have larger, deeper, more interesting histories, don't have signs, and it would be wonderful to have signage, including Wilson Farm Park, of how that park came to be, what's the story behind both the name and the place, and so we would thoroughly enjoy having a conversation with a foundation.
Okay. The Parks Foundation, you have people to talk to, maybe a mission. Thanks. Any other public comments? Can we go to new matters? A board member new matters?
So I have, so first, I'd like to congratulate Chairman Miller on, you know, being re-elected to the, to the board, and I would like to congratulate Hans Van Moll and even Brazunes on their election. But one of the points I wanted to make, I mean, yes, you can congratulate them, but I also wanted to thank the people that ran against them, because one of the important things about a democracy is that power comes from the people, not from the divine right of kings, and elections are basically marketplaces for ideas, and so I think that having people run with different ideas and go to the people to express those ideas is what makes a democracy work. So I want to thank the people that ran, ran against the candidates that succeeded, and I'd like to congratulate the candidates that succeeded. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Baskar. Any other board member new matters? I was gonna mention one thing that sort of is a rift on what you just said, which is, I know we, in terms of the budget, I would expect a lot of pretty robust conversations over the next couple of weeks as we figure out what we're gonna do with the budget. I know, you know, we heard from Supervisor Johnston Pugh and Supervisor Holt on their view of some things, and I know Baskar, Supervisor Baskar has some views also, so there'll be, there'll be some discussions. I just want to make sure the public knows that. There'll be a lot happening in the next couple of weeks on the budget before you see the final budget. Any other board member new matters? Citizen new matters?
Just two announcements real quick. Friday night at the Paley Firehouse, 69 Darby Road, we're having over 30 vendors for a craft fair. It'll be 5 to 9. It's a big event this Friday night from 5 to 9. Sip and shop, come on down. Second one is, I'd just like to reiterate from earlier, this Saturday, the Tridifern Library is gonna transform into a fantastic miniature golf course. All the holes are decorated by sponsors. Paoli Fire volunteers are sponsoring a hole again this year, so check it out, and so many people are involved in this. It's a great cause, it's a great time. Just show up and come on out. Tridifern Library and the Paley.
Thank you.
Ray Clark, again, just a quick question. There was a mention of the bike park, and I just wondered, I haven't heard anything about what's going on. Is it built? What's the status of the bike park currently?
Yeah.
Not while I was standing in line, but Arthur Sidrauzi, again, Painter's Lane. Unfortunately, the grant we got from the state roughly was $120,000, only covered not quite half, and we just weren't able to get the community involvement to do the additional fundraising we needed. So I had a brief conversation with Bill Martin, in fact, yesterday when I ran into him, that, you know, it's, you know, probably not, not gonna happen sadly. I think it was more where we saw a wonderful turnout here of young, young boys and kids, students interested. It didn't materialize into the kind of community-wide involvement we needed to raise the kind of money. We needed to raise anywhere from another $100,000, $120,000, and it just wasn't gonna happen.
Now, we didn't get the money, was that a reimbursement?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we were approved up to $112,000, but yeah, the grant tech will expire June 30th of next year. I'm sorry, 27th, yeah.
Yeah. So are we, are we considering other uses for that grant at this point?
The board, I did speak to Senator Comerter's office. We could consider reallocating that to another park project.
Another park, right, okay. Yeah, okay, all right. So I just, Park Board, you can talk about that. Okay.
I was gonna, so we can take that money and use it for another park?
We, we could.
We could?
It's not guaranteed, so, yeah, the senator would have to talk on our behalf of the DCED. They generally don't like to do that, but if it's, you know, if there's another, let's call it similar-sized project that is relatable, we can certainly ask that it would be, if the DCED would allow us to change the grant application for something else. So it's possible, yes.
So is it, okay, so that is a possibility, so then could we put in, say, to use that to do the basic part for the dog park at Friendship Park? Like, get to...
That's one of the, one of the options that Finance Committee is taking a look at. If we could, one of those bigger projects, it certainly would, and, you know, I kind of mentioned it to Michael at Senator Comerter's office, that if we had a larger park project, could we, and he said, you know, again, we would have to ask, but it's, it would be, it's feasible, and it's really up to DCED, but they want us to use the money for parks, and if it's, you know, we can make that case, I think we have a decent shot at it.
Okay.
I think we have some communication to do with the original, you know, people who came in front of us and wanted this bike park, really to make sure they understand the situation pretty clearly. So we, I think we have a communication responsibility we have to take care of first before we start talking about reallocating, because they, you know, you are here, and we know how intensely they wanted this, and just so they understand, like, you know, they couldn't get the money, they couldn't get the money. Yeah. So, okay, thanks.
Okay. Another matter, again, Arthur Sidrauzi, Painter's Lane. I just want to follow up on Supervisor Baskar's comment about the election, and yes, we are privileged and blessed that we had competitive elections, to the extent they were competitive, but there still are ideas out there that can be brought to this board, and I would